Does anyone remember whether John Hampton was a psychiatrist?
Psychiatrist or psychologist?
Psychologist. Psychologist. Hello, welcome. This is a regular session of the Town of South Kingstown Town Council. The date is Monday, June 14th. The time is 7:30. Could you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susan, can we have the roll call, please?
Council President Fogarty.
Here.
Council Vice President Eddy.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Councilwoman Mackenzie.
Here.
Councilwoman Whaley.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Sue. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings from the work sessions of May 17th, 19th, and 24th. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the work sessions, May 17th, May 19th, and May 24th, 2010.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I didn't say aye. The vote is unanimous. Next is B, the regular sessions, May 24th.
I move approval of the minutes of the regular session for May 24th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the consent agenda. If anybody would like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
If not, then I move approval of this evening's consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Next, we have licenses. And we have license item A is a resolution granting a victualling license to 333 Main Street Incorporated, DBA Fat Bellies, 333 Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to issuance of certificate of occupancy, and the application is by Scott Parker, President, 50 Fairmount Drive, Warwick. And this is a new license application. Is Mr. Parker here? Well, I know you're not Mr. Parker.
I am not, but I can bring him forward. Matt Callahan, representing Scott Parker this evening. Scott is right here. Scott, wouldn't you come on up?
Well, if you want to tell us a little bit about Fat Bellies, either are?
Yes. I'll ask Scott a couple of questions, and I'm sure you can jump right in.
Oh, well, you could say that first. Do you want to?
It may be better if you just continue this until after you complete the public hearing, until you complete the public hearing on the liquor license, because then all of the information will be on the record for the liquor license, rather than having to be brought forward a second time.
All right, so we're going to continue it. Stay close at hand. But it's nice to know who you are, so when we call you up again, we know we had a look. Okay. So we're going to continue that. Is that okay with the council?
Certainly.
You want me to continue?
Yeah, you don't need to motion.
All right, just want to make sure. Okay. Make sure we're doing all the dotting the i's and crossing the t's. So we'll move on to the next license, item B, is a resolution granting a victualling license to Melji's River Edge Cafe, 406A Main Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Rhode Island Department of Health and the Rhode Island Division of Taxation. The application is by Mack T. Eldridge from 4 Windcliff Drive, Saunders Town, and this is new. Is Mr. Eldridge in the audience, Sue?
Yes, I am. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Eldridge. Would you like to tell us a little bit about the River's Edge Cafe and your plans?
The River's Edge Cafe is a continuance of the business that's been there since 1986. There's no planned changes for the operation. It will remain as a breakfast and lunch restaurant.
Okay. Excellent. Anybody have any questions?
Will you not serve supper? Dinner?
I'm thinking about maybe bringing back Friday night fish and chips, or something like that, maybe in the fall, but I haven't decided on that yet.
Mainly breakfast and lunch.
Breakfast and lunch, yeah.
Any other questions, Mr. Eldridge? Do you want to give us the hours of operation? Because really, the camera is there, so if people see this, they'll know when you're open and when to come in.
We're open at 6:00 AM every day. Well, actually, 5:45, if you know the people that attend there every day. And we close roughly 2:00 o'clock. But a lot of times, that's 1:15, 1:30, 1:45, but about 2:00 o'clock, on a daily basis, so.
Good. Good. Very good breakfast there, too. I enjoy it there.
That's very good.
Might spice up some home fries for somebody, though. I've been hearing that the home fries need a little work.
And home fries need a little work? Okay.
We'll look at that.
Okay. Excellent.
That's it.
Jim?
Mark, who's the GIE in the name? M for Mark, ELD for Eldridge, who's the GIE?
That is a God-gifted nickname given to me back in high school, which is an acronym of my first and last name.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Melji, it's very catchy. I like it. I like it. Okay. Any other questions for Mark? No? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I move approval of license B. License A? No, license B. It is license B.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Kathy, just one thing. If he does come back, want to do dinner, is that another request he has to make before the council? Or can he do that without?
Yeah, once he has a victualling license, it's good for all day.
Okay, fine. All right, good. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Again, any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Yep. Have a nice evening. Next, we're going to go to the public hearings. So, public hearing relative to an application for transfer of a license to keep and sell alcoholic beverages in South Kingstown in accordance with the general laws of 1956 as amended as follows. Class B victualler liquor license, transfer of class B victualler liquor license from Midtown Cafe Incorporated, 333 Main Street, Wakefield, by Robin McGugan, President, to 333 Main Street Incorporated, DBA Fat Bellies, 333 Main Street, Wakefield, 02879, by Scott Parker, President, for the first-floor dining room and bar area in accordance with a special use permit granted by the zoning board review on May 19th, 2010, and is further described in the site plan dated March 19th, 2010, on file in the town clerk's office. So, Mr. Callahan, you are back now, so.
I am. I'm here to stay, too.
Mr. Parker, okay?
In connection with the special use permit that was granted, I have a copy of that to place on the record if it is not on the record.
If you want to give it to the clerk, that's Susan would accept that.
I can ask a few questions I indicated of Scott, and then you can jump in with your concerns. Scott, what is your? You live in Warwick, is that correct?
Yeah. Yes.
And your educational background with respect to food preparation and food service? What is it?
I've been working in the food industry for 24 years. Taught at Johnson's for 11 years. Studied in Sweden, London, and traveled Europe for a while.
And your business experience with Fat Bellies? You have one restaurant in Warwick and a more recent one in East Greenwich, is that correct?
Yes.
And how long has the operation been in Warwick?
Since 2006.
And you have a liquor license in connection with that restaurant?
Yes.
And how about East Greenwich?
Yes, I do.
Liquor license there as well?
Yeah.
Now, with respect to the operations in Warwick and East Greenwich, have you ever had any difficulties with serving underage persons or problems with the police department at all?
No, not at all.
And I'd like to place on the record, I have copies for each of the council members as well, if you'd like, that this, we have letters from the chief of police in East Greenwich, a letter from the police department in Warwick, and a letter from the licensing board in Warwick, all indicating that there have never been any difficulties whatsoever with any of the restaurants. And furthermore, although we didn't ask for it, there seems to me there are recommendations in each of the letters urging the South Kingstown Town Council to approve the application.
Okay, can you give that also to Susan?
Now, Scott, would you describe for us the type of operation that Fat's Bellies is? What connection with the type of food service you have? Is it a family restaurant? What is the nature of the service?
It's basically, it's a neighborhood restaurant. It's a, the whole idea came, I've only been in fine dining my entire life. I actually never worked in a pub ever in my life. But when I was studying in Sweden in a castle in 1994, it was a vision of mine to incorporate some fine dining food into a pub environment. I love going to pubs. I love the atmosphere. I love the, I love that neighborhood kind of place where everybody kind of meets to get together, eat, drink, and have a good time. And it was always my vision to incorporate good upscale food with fresh ingredients in a pub environment. So I had a fine dining restaurant years ago called Sophia's, named after my daughter. We won best restaurant in Rhode Island. It was a fine dining restaurant. And while doing that, I opened up Fat Bellies. And there's another story behind the name Fat Bellies and Howard came to face. It was a, it wasn't my first choice, but it worked out pretty well. And Fat Bellies was so easy. It was like a neighborhood place. Everybody would have their own little nickname of it. And it turned out that actually owning a fine dining restaurant was very stressful. You had to be there all the time. If you weren't there, they weren't pounding the veal right, they weren't stirring the risotto right, they weren't making, rolling gnocchis right. I had to be there all the time, and if I wasn't, it was completely stressful. So Fat Bellies was just so easy. I, we make, you know, the thing is, is my wife and I, when we met in the summer, we lived in Newport for a summer, and that's where we met, and we'd always go to a pub. After I was working 80, 90 hours a week, we'd go out and meet, and it was always so relaxed. And I loved that. I loved that environment. And if you guys probably know as well, when you go to like, to a chain pub, or kind of that atmosphere, like a, you know, like a Ruby Tuesdays, or an Applebee's, or Red Parrot, most of the food that they serve is just frozen food. And I didn't want that, because, you know, no one really wants, people want value. And when I incorporated the fine dining kind of aspect with the, you know, fresh ingredients, salad dressings, fresh burgers and stuff, it was an instant success. People really, really liked that, you know?
Tell us, you've indicated you've been doing this for a number of years. What type of awards have you won, and recently, what awards have you won?
Well, for the last four years, we've actually won best neighborhood restaurant in the state for like, four years in a row. But this summer, actually, was our best summer yet. The Providence Phoenix and the Rhode Island Monthly awarded us the best Irish pub in the state of Rhode Island. And the best award actually came in the May and June edition of the Yankee Magazine, which is all throughout New England. It's not just the state, it's all of New England. They voted us the best pub in New England for our food. So the best, the best food for pub. And that also goes against all the pubs and restaurants in Boston, and, you know, in Connecticut, and, you know, so it was a big award for us, for just a small little place that we have in East Greenwich, you know?
Now, Scott, have you been involved in the community in Warwick and East Greenwich as far as sponsorship of activities?
Yeah, we sponsor many children. I have three children. Actually, my oldest is, it's his birthday right now. We went for dinner earlier at Chalio's, and I have to take off to come here. He's 12 today. So we sponsor a lot of children's organizations, softball, lacrosse, soccer, and we do benefits every, we try to do like, twice, twice a year. We do a golf tournament in August, and we just did what's called a belly-to-belly. It was a race, and we raised money for children with disabilities. And the golf tournaments, we raised $10,000 last year for children that are born with cancer.
So you intend to get involved in the community in South Kingstown as well?
Yep.
Let's talk about the restaurant itself. We submitted a site plan, and there are 62 seats at tables, and there are 13 seats at the bar. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the fire marshal has gone through the operation already?
Yep, he was there today, in fact.
And what was his reaction?
Oh, he's very excited about it.
Meet all the codes?
Yeah, he's, he was, the whole town itself, especially the fire department, everybody's been, I've never seen a town so abrasive and helpful as far as, you know, what we're trying to do here, so. Yeah, they're all, they're all for us.
Let's get into the business of having a bar. Now, you're aware that there have been three restaurants in this location, and none of them have really hit a home run. Is that correct?
I don't really know the previous.
But you know that they haven't been terribly successful? And do you think that the lack of a bar is a critical factor in that?
Well, I think that's one factor. I think that having, having a bar there is, is a good sales, it's good for like, sales, I guess you could say.
How has the nature of bar change in the last 20 years in connection with the restaurant use?
Well, for Fat Bellies, it's like, well, it's like going to Washington DC and not seeing the Washington Monument. It's part of the restaurant. It's a, what's the?
What about the business with people, people coming into the restaurant? Just single people, or widow people divorced? Do they like to sit at a table by themselves?
No, there's, most people, the first place they want to go to is the bar area. They want to sit down and, you know, watch a game, or, you know. A lot of, a lot of single people come in a lot of times instead of sitting together, or a lot of friends will meet, and, you know, they just want to sit at the bar. Yep.
Is that the, when you were teaching at Johnson's in Wales, is that the way they teach now as far as organizing restaurants?
When I was, I actually graduated from Johnson's Wales in 1992. And when I graduated, it was funny, because there were classes on dining room. You know, you had a classroom on how to, you know, be a dining room person. And then there was classes on bartending. So you'd go into a room where there was bartending. Well, I've been a teacher there for 11 years. I actually just left this year. But what they do at Johnson's Wales now is they incorporate both of them all together. So when they teach about dining services, the bars are, there's always a bar in the dining room. So they teach proper bar service as well as dining services. It's part of the restaurant to keep everything together. I remember growing up, you know, a lot of family restaurants, there was always, they were always separated, you know? And now, I think especially with the whole, you know, non-smoking in the, you know, there's no smoking in restaurants now, I think that actually helped out to kind of open up everything and bring everything together, you know?
And you're familiar with all of the rules and regulations and statutes which apply to restaurants? The tip service?
No.
Checking for IDs?
Yep.
All of that type of regulations you're familiar with and certainly intend to comply with?
Absolutely, yeah.
I have no other questions, Scott.
All right. Does anybody from the council have any questions? Polly?
Will you serve at the bar? Will you serve food at the bar so someone will come in and?
Oh, of course.
Order a drink, and they'll get a sandwich, or?
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Carol?
Yeah. Where was Sophia's?
On Warwick Avenue. It's still there.
Oh, it is?
I sold, it's my daughter Sophia. When we sold the restaurant, I actually, it was Father's Day a couple of years ago. Driving to my wife's parents' house, and I was like, we got to sell it. It was just so stressful. But when I sold it, I sold the name, I sold all the recipes, and it's funny, to this very day, the entire staff that I hired is still there. Every single one, every single one of the people are still there to this day.
And?
And the same menu, the same menu as well.
So are you going to have the same menu like you have in East Greenwich?
We're going to have a menu, all the menus are going to be basically the same, but with being here in Wakefield, we're going to also have more seafood. We're going to incorporate more seafood, you know, fried clam roll, new fish and chip. We'll do a baked scallop, you know, we have a thing that I, when I was in a, when I was a, I'm a certified executive chef as well. I had the number one restaurant in Rhode Island when I was a chef years ago. And, you know, we'll do like, some, they were called Parker Mussels. You know, we'll do mussels and stuff like that as well.
And will you buy locally? Would you consider buying from local merchants?
In fact, one of the things about my food is, and I've always said it, you know, I always said, if you buy the best ingredients, if I broke even for the rest of my life and made people happy, I would have had a completed life. I never go in this for the money. I always go in to please the customers. And that's, the focus is always, the focus is always on the quality and the service. I have an orientation plan for next Tuesday and Wednesday for the people we've hired. And I've been working with my assistant and my manager for the past two weeks, just on the outline of the agenda. And I, you know, not to badmouth anybody, but I've been going to different restaurants, and I see what we want to do. It has to be the best, the number one top ingredients and always the best service. So like, it was funny, because I was telling someone the other day that I buy local calamari. I buy the most expensive calamari that you can buy. It's a domestic. And I had a guy at the Boston Food Show tell me, you can't buy domestic. Everything comes from the Philippines, and China, and Malaysia, and Vietnam. And I said, no, I buy a domestic calamari. I said, I buy the best. And in East Greenwich, you can go by the water, some of the restaurants in the water, and you can get a $7.95 calamari that are like little circles, and it's horrible. It's unedible. It's actually, it's insulting, you know, I couldn't even eat it. And what we do is, I just buy, I don't care if it's a dollar more, and I make a dollar less, it doesn't really matter, because this guy's going to come back four or five times a month. And we buy a domestic calamari. So this, this person questioned me. He ended up finding out that there is a domestic calamari. I get it from Point Judith.
Oh, nice.
And it's, it's expensive, but it's the best, and that's why our calamari is so good. So people, you know, in East Greenwich, there's La Maseria, they spent $1.7 million just on their restaurant. People will have them there and come in and have a calamari or a Caesar salad. And it's, hands down, it's a better calamari, it's a better Caesar salad, you know? And it's a lot cheaper.
That sounds good. Now, I, just one more question. Is this, this is your third Fat Bellies, right? This will be your third?
Yep.
And you run all the other two also?
Yes.
Are you planning on opening anymore, or is this it?
I want to open up a hundred.
For a while? A hundred? Wow. That's ambitious.
My wife says I can't do anything at least for a year, so. I have to be honest with you, of everything I've ever done in my life, this is the one I'm actually the most proud of at this stage of my life. It's unbelievable, like, all the carpenters, my electricians.
It looks nice.
I had a birthday party for my son yesterday at our house, and we had a band play. We had 100 people there. And I had my tradesmen, I had my electricians, my plumbers all there. They care about it more than, I mean, I care about it, but they're so passionate about making this place successful. It's unbelievable. If you haven't been in the place, what they've done, people think we've imported the wood from Ireland. People think that the wood is 100 years old. My carpenters are so, like, they have had fights with people. Don't put that down the bar. Don't come over here. Like, they're, they're so passionate about what they're doing. It means so much more to them, you know? It's unbelievable, like, what it means to them and what it means to me. The detail work in this place is far more than I ever expected, and a lot more expensive than that. I mean, I'm way over budget on it, but the thing is, is at the end of the day, you know, I'm halfway through my life, I guess, you know, you got to, if you're going to do it, you got to do it right, you know?
And when do you plan to open? That's my last question. Tomorrow?
No, I'm just joking. I'll tell you, I've never, being a Johnson's Wales instructor, I've never had difficulties finding cooks, but I've had a lot of issues finding cooks here in Wakefield. So my plan is to have orientation next Tuesday and Wednesday, and possibly have a soft opening for family and friends Thursday, and open up Friday and Saturday, you know, full-time. But I'm hopeful that that'll happen, but I really, we'll see.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right. It's exciting. Jim?
So you're not going to bring a cook down from East Greenwich or Warwick to start you out on the right foot? That's okay. But wouldn't you ordinarily do that?
What's that?
Wouldn't you ordinarily bring a?
If you can't find a cook that, around here, you're going to do it yourself? Going to bring someone off of East Greenwich?
I'll throw the apron on myself.
Couple of questions. We want you to make money, because we need to make more for meals tax, et cetera. So that only makes sense. We want you to be successful. Any cannibalizing of your restaurants between each other in Warwick and East Greenwich? They're only about a mile apart, but, or you've been so popular that folks can find an opening at one or the other?
No. If, in Warwick, we have been so consistent, we're, it's so funny, because the Potawatomi area is such a unique neighborhood, and our Potawatomi Fat Bellies is, it's just been unbelievable. I mean, I, I'm so proud of it, because we barely, we, my wife and I, we scraped nickels together, pennies together, just to open that sucker up. And I just paid, I just paid the last payment last month to pay it off after five years. I mean, I just, just paid it off, of that first loan. And there's been times where I was like, oh, brother, what am I going to do with this thing? But people love that. I have customers that go to the one at Warwick and will not go to the one on Main Street, East Greenwich. The one on Main Street, East Greenwich is very, very busy. We have a waiting, we have a waiting, a wait almost every single night of the week. We're very, very busy there. And East Greenwich has been very, you know, very open to us. You know, we're the busiest restaurant on Main Street. And, I mean, we've had lines out the door for an hour just to get in the place. And it's, it's going to be actually half the size of the one at Wakefield. And I think the area, what we do here, you know, there's so many great restaurants in this area. I know the Muse is really known for their drafts, you know, the amount of drafts that they have on, and that's great. Casey's is known for what they're known for. Chalio's must be known for what they're known for. But Fat Bellies is really, it's known for their food and the neighborhood, you know, a neighborhood restaurant. And that's what we're going to do. And I think when people see the detail work and the woodwork that we've done in the place, I think that will be what people come to Fat Bellies for. It's going to be very unique.
Just to finish up, is East Greenwich allowed you tables outside and chairs, service outside? What have they done on the sidewalk area?
It's funny, because I don't know what it's like in Wakefield, I haven't looked into it yet, but in, in East Greenwich, we can have tables outside, we can have chairs outside. But it's actually owned by the state. Main Street, East Greenwich is owned by the state, so the town has no authorization, no authority over that. So they allow us to serve out on the sidewalk, but we, we're not allowed to serve alcohol on the street.
Okay. And I guess lastly, since you spend all the time in Sweden, we'll have some Swedish meatballs at the bar for appetizers?
You know, every, I studied for, in Sweden, in a castle. And I never made Swedish meatballs, but everybody always asked me to make Swedish meatballs. I learned how to, like, bone out a filet and pork, and I did a dinner for the Prime Minister of Sweden, but I never did Swedish meatballs, so I'm going to have to go back, I guess.
Oh, you brought it up. You brought it up.
I can make them.
Well, we're going to demand that as part of any approval.
Yep.
Got to do Swedish meatballs. Okay, thank you.
Will this be an increase of, you say you have 62 seats and 13 at the bar. Is this an increase over what Robin had?
I believe it is, yeah.
Is it more?
Yep.
Because I know how hard he worked keeping his restaurant going.
Well, we actually opened, we put another door in for egress. That was one of the fire marshals. We have two doors now in the restaurant for egress. So actually, for the square footage of the restaurant, we actually could have up to 110 people in the restaurant now. But there's no need for it. We like to have room for everybody, so I think we only have like, 73 or 75.
Where does the other door go out? Out toward the parking lot?
Yeah, there's one that goes to the front of the building, and then there's another door that goes out to the back of the building, where there's a parking lot.
That's a good idea. Yeah.
Is that through the old kitchen? Is that through the old kitchen? Is that through the old kitchen, or did you?
No, that kitchen's a whole 'nother entrance, so there's actually three ways to exit. But for the customers, there'll be two forms of egress. And then there's another form of egress for the, the cooks in the kitchen. So there's actually three.
All right, we're gonna open it up to the public hearing, to the public. If anybody from the public would like to come forward and ask questions? Nope, seeing none. Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second. And any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And what is the council's pleasure on the transfer of the license?
I wish him well. I hope everything goes well. It sounds good.
So you're approving that?
I would vote for it.
Okay, make a motion. Polly has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. And any other discussion?
Just, no, I certainly wish you the best, and I want to thank Robin for all his efforts to try to pull Wakefield together. And thank you for the time. And it's good seeing you down at that other restaurant here in South Kingston, so good luck to you.
Thank you.
Before you vote, we just want to clarify, Polly's motion was to approve Public Hearing Item A. That's what I thought you said, right, Polly?
Yes.
That's what I thought she said.
Yes, I approve the public hearing.
Okay, Polly makes that approval. I have to say, I haven't seen anybody as passionate as you about your cooking in a restaurant coming in front of this town council. So I do wish you very good luck with, with this.
Thank you.
So it's been moved in seconded. Again, no other discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you. Now, is that the, that the victualling license too?
That, we're gonna go back now and do your License A, so if you want to stand there in case we have any questions for you. That's been approved, so now we go back to License A, a resolution granting a victualling license to 333 Main Street Incorporated, DBA Fat Bellies, subject to an issuance of cer- certificate of occupancy. The application is by Scott Paka, President, 50 Fairmont Drive, Warwick. This is new. Again, so you are asking for your victualling license. We transferred the liquor license to you, so we've already kind of heard about your food, but if you want to tell us in a bridge version, you're gonna serve food there, correct?
Yeah.
I'm trying to bridge it for you.
Briefly, that's it. That's it.
Neighborhood pub.
Do you want to say something, Steve? No, you look like you're gonna...
How about a motion to approve License A?
Okay.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Good luck.
Okay, so we have items, the new business items B and C, and due to a, an error in the amount of advertisement of these public hearings, we talked before in our work session that we are going to table these until we get proper advertising on them. So if I could have a motion to table both A and, excuse me, B and C of the public hearings?
Again, the proper motions to table, but we can also announce that they will be reheard, or they will be heard for the first time at the June 28 council meeting. So anyone who's interested in them, June 28th is when you'll be hearing these public hearings.
So motion to table B and C?
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next we move on to communication items. Communication Item D is a communication dated May 21st, 2010, from John Jackson, Assistant Scout Master, Voice Scout Troop 44, Mattoonik, requesting letters of congratulations for Seth Noon, Charles Michael Matthews, Benjamin Jackson, and Ryan Kelly for attending the Eagle Scout, excuse me, for attaining the Eagle Scout Award and inviting council members to attend the award ceremony on June 26th, 2010. It is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. We talked about this in the work session.
Yep. Well, we should send out the letters of congratulations, and should we do the citations also from the town?
Yeah.
Council?
Yeah.
Proclamations? I think we, proclamations?
And, um...
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, that would be good. For June 26th.
Polly said that you, she was going to be attending, correct? And, and, oh, no, and Ella.
Well, Ella's going.
Excuse me, Ella.
And I think I'm gonna go.
I knew two people did. It was Ella and Carol. Polly did the last Eagle Scout.
I did the last Eagle Scout, which was lovely.
Yes, yes, okay. So there were two people in attending and presenting them there.
So are we going to prepare them for you to present at the award ceremony?
Yeah, don't you think? That would be very nice. That would be appropriate, but you should let them know you're going to do it.
Right. Let the scoutmaster know. If they would like to come in front of the council too and be recognized, we'll also invite them.
For the 28th as well?
Right.
Okay.
Just so they can say the pledge, and I always think it's nice to honor them at the council meetings, okay? So do I have a motion to do all that?
So moved.
Second.
And seconded by Ella. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next we move on to a communication dated May 26th, 2010, from Anthony Megas, Chairperson, South Kingston School Committee, requesting the town council endorsement of the school committee's budget reduction plan that proposes utilization of additional fund balance money is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
We discussed this at, at the work session also. And at this point in the budget process, it looks as if it will not be necessary to make this, to utilize additional funds from the fund balance. So I think we'll just send a letter to that effect, and also say that we would certainly be open to any, if there's any other further revisions in the future, we certainly would be open to hearing them from the school committee.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Jim?
Yeah, Steve, if the state budget, if the $100 million, and who knows what else, if this, when is the first time that we could be looking at a supplemental budget? I assume you can always call the General Assembly back into session, but if things don't pan out, what I hear from Washington, I mean, they really don't want to spend a lot of money. But what could be the earliest point here? We may need to know something.
Well, the General Assembly could go back into session any time that there's a call for them to go back into session. The question would be, when would we think it would be most reasonable? The way the education aid formula was developed requires a report to be issued by November 15th of this year for future years. There'll be a revenue estimating conference that'll also be held this fall. Based on what takes place at the revenue estimating conference, as well as the deliberations at the federal level, there'll have to be a determination made by both chambers on whether a supplemental budget in advance of the new governor coming into office would be something that they would be looking for. Existing governor could submit a request for supplemental budget in advance of, of the new governor being, being elected. I think the earliest that you're gonna see supplemental budgets would probably be after the revenue estimating conference at, at, at minimum. As I've said in the pre-session, there still should be concern on what has been the enacted budget for 11-year, on whether or not there may be needs for reductions on what that enacted budget is as a supplemental as we go forward. And that while the dollars have been appropriated, they have not been released, and they won't be released. They're released on a schedule, and that schedule through December would only have, I think, the first 60% of the money released. So there's still gonna be questions as far as that, that aid, if in fact they have to balance the budget. I don't think you'll see a supplemental budget before the new governor's elected.
That $100 million from the feds, is that current calendar year, fiscal year? When do they have to make a decision on that in Washington?
That's during the fiscal year that the state would be operating with the October. That was a reauthorization that they were looking at. It was gonna be, that, that money was gonna be made available. So it would be for the 10, 11-year of how much money that they would be able to receive in federal, in federal aid.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next we move on to Communication H. Is a resolution adopted June 1st, 2010, by the Richmond Town Council, requesting the General Assembly to amend state law to allow the repair or reconstruction of municipally-owned bridges, culverts, and other structures and an adjacent, and/or adjacent to wetlands that were damaged by the March flooding without a permit from DEM, notwithstanding any increases in the size of the structure, and seeking support for this request from other cities and towns is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. It's the council's pleasure on this item.
Well, we, we discussed this in the work session. I, I don't think we wanted to get involved in this, especially as it relates to the wetlands and increase in the size of structures without permits from DEM. So I believe we were gonna place it on file.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Now, I agree with that, that I don't think DEM would ever, ever, ever allow this to, to happen. And it has passed the session time too, so I agree it should be placed on file. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution, is Communication I, a resolution adopted May 18th, 2010, by the Richmond Town Council, waiving recording fees for U.S. Small Business Administration low-interest loans to flood victims, and authorizing the town to seek reimbursement from FEMA, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs. What's the council's like to do with this?
Again, we discussed it at the work session, and we're going to place it on file, is my understanding?
Second.
Yeah. Steve, you wanna talk about that?
Just for clarification, there's two state statutes that are in place that would not allow for that type of a relief to be provided unless it came through the General Assembly.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Communication Item J is a communication dated June 10th, 2010, from Peter A. Del Judas, submitting his resignation from the Planning Board effective immediately, is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
I'd like to thank Peter very much for his work on the Planning Board. He's been an excellent member. He's come to all the meetings. And the only reason he has to resign is that he's, he and his wife are moving to Westerly. So I think with great reluctance, we will accept his resignation. But I think we should send a letter to Peter thanking him.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Jim?
Yeah, I'll certainly second what Polly said, also too, Peter's business really requires him to spend a lot of evenings there, well past 10 o'clock. So, yeah, he and his wife are moving there, so many thanks to, to Peter for his service to the community.
And we can plug his business in Westerly.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I'll let you do that.
Dick's World of Wine down there, and he's done a very good job down there, and we're gonna miss him greatly. He's just a very, very nice gentleman. We appreciate everything that he's done.
World of Wine, and he overlooks the mighty Hawkeettuck River.
Yes, and I don't think he'd get flooded.
Great spot.
Lucky, lucky for him. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is comments from interested citizens. If you have anything and you'd like to come forward, please do so now. State your name for the record.
Good evening. David Caprio. Just, I, I just wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank all of you and the school committee for your assistance, and Steve and your entire staff for your assistance in helping us get through the, all of the issues with Wakefield Elementary School, and allowing us to keep the school open for another year. Right through the whole budget debate, especially on the school funding formula. I mean, right from the floor of the House, we were contacting Steve, discussing what amendments might be appropriate, and the whole delegation agreed to put in a few amendments, which were argued right on the floor of the House. And I think we, we made a good presentation showing the members that it's not gonna take, it wouldn't take a whole lot of money just to, just to make up for the cities and towns that were being reduced. Like, and South Kingston was at the top of that list, other than the combined schools. So I think it was less than $3 million, I think, was the number. If you just took all the, all the school districts that were losing money, to bring them to level funding was less than $3 million, without affecting anybody that was getting money. And we tried, we made that argument, and a lot of reps came up to me afterwards, and that was a number that was very low. Everybody thought it was, would be a much bigger number to make up for the deficiencies. So we have another year to review that formula. The formula, unfortunately, the, the formula that, that did reduce South Kingston's share, although it was some $600,000, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, 600 and change, South Kingston received about 600 and change more than they expected. Is that fair to say, from the original number? I remember seeing a chart. There, there was a comparison, and ours was about 600 more.
I would say we're losing $670,000 less based on the, on that. We're not gaining.
Well, we're gaining from what, I guess that's a...
I guess it's all in the eyes of the beholder, David.
Well, well, that, we, we moved the needle in the right direction over $600,000 from, from the starting point, which is significant. It's, it was about 600,000 and change from where we started, and that was enacted. And now we have another year to examine the formula, give all the cities and towns a chance to, you know, get prepared for what, what may be the formula. But I'm not, I'm not convinced that the one that was passed this past week is going to be the final formula. Many of the members of the General Assembly during the debate made some very good points for their own district, some very good arguments as to why the, the formula may not be the most fair one. And there will certainly be continued discussion on that next year prior to its implementation. Actually, there was one of the votes that was very close on, on the, on the funding formula, on one of the amendments, so there didn't seem to be the overwhelming acceptance that, that the final vote, you know, indicated throughout some of the amendments. But I, I really want to thank all of you. It was a lot of interaction in a short amount of time between yourselves and the school committee and Steve's office, receiving Commissioner Gist here, taking the time to sit through her presentation and really challenge her on why, on the methods and the, and the actual formula itself, and, and putting her under the, under the gun to, to explain it to all of us as to why she thought it was a solid formula. And I think anybody, any independent person watching that would walk away saying that South Kingston deserves, you know, a, a more fair formula. If we want to keep our education standards where they are, and we want to keep the children and, and preserve the neighborhoods around Wakefield Elementary School, you know, certainly I think we all made a good case for that. So I'm here to thank all of you and everybody else, especially the parents. The parents of that, you know, that emailed us and actually came to the State House throughout the year, called and wrote letters, I'm sure not only to me and the other legislators, but also to you and the school committee, and really showed us how important this issue was to them. And, you know, we all worked together and were able to, to get over the hump this year on that, so. Other than that, the budget was, in the final days, were an interesting week. You know, the finale, finishing the final business at 4:00 AM was, was interesting. Every, most people actually stayed a little bit after to bid farewell to, actually, I think, eight, eight or nine members that are not seeking reelection. So that was a long night, but it was, it was a pretty long week. But I think overall, the major issue that the South County delegation went into the week with was, you know, this funding formula and the budget, making sure that at a very minimum, we could keep Wakefield School open. And we also implemented the other item that Steve had brought up with the car tax hold harmless item, where now you have the ability to take the actual value of the vehicles on any given year, whether they go up or down. And that was something I don't think anybody brought to the attention, and most people didn't even know that that restriction was, was in the law. And Steve brought it to our attention, and it made, it made enough sense to the chairman of finance and to the staff and to the members that that restriction was removed, which gives you more flexibility in what you have, in setting the different rates here in South Kingston and every other city and town does around the state. So kudos to Steve for that, for bringing it to our attention. Doesn't happen often, where a brand-new idea comes in at that late stage of the game and, and actually gets it through. So we were able to, to get that through also. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, David, education and funding formula, were there other options that had some momentum but were derailed? Because this was really the last item considered at the session. In other words, any changes we may see next year? Could they be stronger?
There were, there were several amendments posed. Actually, I introduced one at, on behalf of the whole South Kingston delegation. Representative Rice also had one. Mike Rice had one, that he was prepared to introduce, and somebody from, somebody else introduced pretty much the same amendment as he was going to introduce, which would pretty much extended the implementation date prior to he did. So we had two in the pipeline ready to go, and, and there were several others. Representative Rice in Newport, Amy Rice, introduced a few. And I believe Representative Gallison from War, from Bristol, they have a regional school district there. They get, they get hit very hard also. And there was, there was some very interesting debate. And, you know, I'm confident that when, when we reconvene, there, there's going to be more significant examination and discussion regarding the school funding formula. Because we did, we ran some numbers right there on the floor during the debate. And as I, as I stated, if you took all the schools that were going to gain money and left, and allowed them to receive the increases that they were going to get, and then you took the schools that were just going to get a reduction, like South Kingston, the only amount of money it would take to take, to get all the schools that were going to get a reduction and bring them back to level funding, from, so just the reduction ones, was less than $3 million for the whole state. And if you include Central Falls, which is all, all state, they were about $1 million. So the whole state plus Central Falls was, I think, just a little over $4 million. So for a $4 million item in our, you know, whatever, $7, $8 billion budget, to, that, that's all it would take to, at a very minimum, hold all the schools' level funding, or better. You know, so for the formula for all the schools, they would lose money, you know, except for Central Falls, less than $3 million just to bring them, which South Kingston would be included in, up to level funding. And that makes a big difference.
What did they call that? Hold harmless? What, what was that?
There's some, there was some type, you can call it what you wish, but it would be, it was a significantly small number. I actually was going around the chamber, asking the question, "How much you think it would take to bring all the schools that are losing, loose school districts losing money, just up to level funding?" And the most common answer was between 20 and 30 million. People thought it was a real big number. And when I showed them the numbers, and we actually had a spreadsheet with a lot of different information on it, and one of them broke down every school district. If you just added up all the school districts that were losing money, it was, you know, just under 3 million. And that was, that was a shocker to most of the members, to think that for $3 million, we might have been able to keep all the schools at a very minimum of level funding, which would have eliminated a lot of the stress and strain that happened in this room over the last several months.
The problem with that is the, the political power and the urban core, that's not getting what they want.
Well, no, it wouldn't affect them, because we're not, that would be with, that would be allowing them to receive whatever their increase was. We're not, we wouldn't be bringing them down. But I think your point magnifies, the, magnifies the accomplishment of delaying the implementation, because remember, there are a lot more school districts, hence a lot more state representatives, that were receiving an increase in the urban core, a, a significant increase. So, you know, they're on the reverse end of this whole formula than we are. And there was a lot more people hoping to implement this formula this year so that they would qualify for all that increased money. So the minority of districts that were gonna be, take a cut, that were gonna be reduced, like South Kingston, were able to band together and convince the leadership and the members that delaying this would be fair and equitable to the detriment of all those other school districts that would have been receiving, some of them very substantial amounts of money. You know, that delay, you know, in their mind, cost them, you know, millions and millions of dollars. So, you know, to, to, to push off the implementation of this was not well-received by a lot of representatives, because a lot of them had their districts getting a lot more money. And so it was, it really was a significant accomplishment. And I know your voice, all of your voice, Steve's, and... of your voice, Steve's, and the, and the school committee, and even, you know, the commissioner coming down here, and some of the other districts, um, you know, we, we, we pled our case very loudly. And it was not an easy task to, to have to face the majority of representatives and tell them that that money they thought they were going to get in the formula, they're going to have to wait a year for.
Yeah, and I'm sure that's going to be very difficult because those districts, uh, the per student, um, numbers are well below all the districts you talked about here. So I know there's going to be another effort on their part to try to get a larger share of the state pie. Obviously, everyone's hoping the revenues in the state grow, but if they do not, um, I guess I'm worried that we're going to be seeing, uh, another strong effort on behalf of the urban core next year to try to increase their numbers, which...
I, I don't know, you know, the, the urban core had, um, the formula based upon the different factors that Steve outlined many times and that you all are very well aware of. Um, the formula is very friendly to them, as is. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure what their strategy is going to be, but I know, uh, at least all the reps from South Kingston and some of the other areas that were affected, especially the regional schools, will certainly be looking to make it more fair on the bottom end. Without, and you don't even really have to take anything from the top end to do that because the, the, the real number of dollars that you're dealing with is not a significant number. I mean, open up a few more fat bellies down here and the restaurant tax might pay for it anyway.
David, I, yeah, I didn't mean to, this will be an argument for another day. Uh, I appreciate the effort you and the other reps, senators did on our behalf. I just think it's, um, uh, going to be short-lived here because if there's any equity between the urban core per student, what they're getting on average versus suburbs like ourselves, Narragansett, the Portsmouth and those other communities, you talked about, there's going to have to be some catch-up. So I don't know if it's going to be out of new revenue growth in the decade ahead that you'll see the urban core get all the money and we just stay level funded. I mean, that's, they're two sides of this coin, but I, I don't think, I thank you for the year that you bought us, but I just think that we've got a lot of decisions to make on the years ahead.
Well, I'm not taking, I'm not particularly taking credit for buying the year. You know, the reason I stood up was to, to thank actually all of you and all the parents and everybody else for being a part of the process and really putting the wind at our backs at the State House to try to do that for everybody. Um, you know, it's, it's a, it's, it's, it's a discussion that happens every year. You know, at least now, moving forward, you know, this next year, there'll be the, the formula that will be discussed and, you know, hopefully we can get it, um, get some help on the bottom end so that, uh, so that we're not looking at a decrease or, or at a very minimum, uh, you know, maybe an increase if we can, if we can work some of the factors. Uh, and, and I actually, I'm just thinking, uh, there was, um, transportation is now also being considered outside of the formula, not as a formula item, but as, as a potential additional, um, uh, supplement to the formula. And I know that was a discussion and, and that applies more to South Kingston at, because as you all know, we're one of the larger land masses than any other city in town. So that's another factor that we were able to work in to, not necessarily the funding formula, but to sup, to supplement the funding formula to address some of the concerns that were brought up, uh, here that we carried to the State House for the town. So we, we, you know, we live to fight another day with the school funding. And, you know, the, the urban core has their, their unique challenges. And they, uh, they fight for funding to deal with theirs. But we have our success here. We have our, you know, our, our, the scores and, and the neighborhood schools, and we have to fight to keep those open. And that's what we're going to go back next year and fight to do.
David, part of the formula will be given out according to the number of students in the district. And every student in the district all over the state will receive the same amount, eight thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, Polly, I couldn't hear the beginning.
My honor? Okay. Um, I was saying, part of the formula will be given out according to the number of students in the district. And each student is, say, worth eight thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And so that's how the formula will be given out? Is that correct?
I'm going to turn that to the resident expert on the formula. Steve, Steve has pretty much written a book on, on this.
Just say yes, Steve.
Yes, Polly.
Is that, but, but there's other factors obviously that...
Yeah, one of the factors, but just in saying that, that the urban schools will be competing with the, uh, rural schools is really not quite fair. They'll all be given the same basic amount.
Well, not necessarily because there are other factors that impact.
Well, yes, the, yeah.
There's the, there's a few of the, and I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if I'm using the right term, but the poverty factors, um, land valuations and, and kids on...
Ability to pay taxes.
The lunch program, right, Steve?
Right. I, I think the easiest way to say is that every student will be looked at as having a value of eight thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. However, once the poverty factors are brought into the equation and the tax capacity of each community is brought into the equation, then you come up with a percentage. South Kingston's percentage was that we would get eighteen point two percent of that eight thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. Urban areas like Providence would get eighty-three percent of that eighty-two hundred. So...
Okay, so there is quite a difference.
A great deal more money that would be going out based on a percentage because the eighty-two ninety is only what the core education cost is. The reimbursement from the state is only the percentage after those poverty factors and tax capacity are taken into consideration in the formula, the way, the way it's been constituted at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I was just kind of, um, I just found that interesting with, um, the three million to equalize the towns. I didn't realize that, David. Um, and I agree that it was many people working together and I'm hoping with the economic crisis continuing that we get a real jump and, you know, really take another look at this formula, um, early next year and put, put everybody's heads together.
I mean, the, the formula's, you know, is going to be a continuing discussion as we start next year. There's, there's no doubt about it. I mean, just, just structurally, the, the change that's happening in the House of Representatives, I mean, the Chairman of Finance is leaving and he's been a longstanding, very active, hands-on chairman. Stephen Constantino, as, you know, you may know, he's running for Mayor of Providence. So there's going to be a new Chairman of Finance. And, you know, that one person at, leading the helm, you know, could make a big difference as to how things have, and that, that has not been announced yet. So we, you know, we don't even know who that is. But just on the merits of what was discussed in the debate on the school funding formula, I think that, um, there were many good points brought up that would enable the formula to be adjusted so that the schools that are getting less don't necessarily have to get less at the expense of the schools that are getting more. Um, and, and, and an example is bringing in the transportation, um, transportation item outside of the formula, but that's a whole sep, now that would be a whole separate, uh, you know, a whole separate source of funding, uh, which benefit, which would benefit South Kingston more than, more than other areas. So there may be, and, and, and I'm not saying that solves the issue, but that's, at least it's moving in that, in the right direction where we're starting to address the concerns of...
It's a step to being more fair, which is what the, what we wanted in the, in the first place, what we'd have been arguing for.
And again, that's why I'm here to thank all of you because without you letting us know, you know, what, what the best way to go about it for the town, you know, we wouldn't know. And, I mean, we were in contact with Steve and, you know, frankly, oftentimes after business hours on his cell phone, and he didn't even have the benefit of having a lot of his paperwork in front of him. But without that, he still was able to give us very, very valuable information. Actually shot me an email, um, with some suggestions as to, uh, you know, what some of the better, uh, differences that could be made for the town, almost during the debate. So there was constant communication, uh, you know, back and forth. You all know that, Steve knows it, but I just wanted to say it on the record so that, uh, that they, that everybody else would know it. And again, I can't thank the parents enough because it was really, uh, they're presenting their concern and seeing it firsthand at the spaghetti dinners, at the walk to school day, to really see what that school means to the neighborhood. Um, it's, it's a lot more, it's a lot more than the school. It's, it's really a center of, of the neighborhood. And as many parents said to me at the spaghetti dinner and at the, uh, walk to school and even at the, the little celebration we had last week, one of the reasons, one of the main reasons they actually chose to live in that neighborhood and purchased a home and relocated their family there was the fact that they could walk their child to school and pick their child up and walk them home. And they could live in, you know, they could live next door to their, to the classmates of their children, and they could grow in that type of a community. And that's what the school represents. So we really have to keep that in mind as we move forward next year, um, in looking at this formula and really try to ensure that there's funding to keep it open.
Okay, thanks, David. Um, comments?
I, I just want to, um, bring the chamber news.
Okay.
Comments? Um, I did talk to the chamber today and just three little updates. They just want to, want to make everybody aware that their trolley service is running seven days a week from eight in the morning until ten at night, and it's free. Um, and our Economic Development Committee was very instrumental in, you know, really getting this up and running. So kudos. And then the Second Annual South County Golf Ball Drop will take place on Sunday, July 18th at one-thirty. So there are raffle tickets available for five dollars at the chamber. And you could win over six thousand dollars in prices, um, prizes. And last but not least is the gift certificates. Father's Day is coming and, you know, if you can buy gift certificates, anniversaries, graduations, it keeps the business in town, which helps our taxes. So keep those gift certificates in mind.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Yes.
Speaking of taxes, just the, the budget, again, this year with the significant deficits, we were able to, um, to pass a budget despite the hundred million that we hope comes from the federal government without raising broad-based taxes. And although there was some, some pressure put on the cities and towns, I was just reviewing Steve's, uh, memo where, you know, the average increase in car tax here for those who own cars is, I think, twenty-five dollars a year, I saw, twenty-five or twenty-six dollars a year. And the property tax for those who own property might be a hundred, hundred and so. I thought, I thought I saw that. Correct me if I'm wrong. But, um, you know, without, without raising a broad-based tax and, um, in forestalling the funding formula, I think, I think we came out of a budget system, a budget session in much better shape than, than initially we thought we were going to. Without, you know, although we, you know, there was some losses sustained. I think in the end, if, if, I think if somebody told us a month ago that the numbers were going to be as they actually ended up, I'm not sure if anybody really, uh, anybody would've thought that, that would be possible. So. Try to do it without raising taxes anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, to the town manager's report.
A couple of issues. One is that, uh, I provided the council with a preliminary two thousand ten, two thousand eleven property tax levy program, uh, memorandum. It's quite detailed, but essentially we're looking to certify the tax roll this week, June fifteenth. And at this point, the tentative rate is anticipated to be fourteen dollars and nineteen cents, uh, per thousand. Uh, we will be bringing all of the motor vehicle values back onto the tax roll. As the council's aware, in current year, there was a six thousand dollar state exemption that, uh, Representative Caprio just, uh, talked about that program. That's being dropped, uh, down to a five hundred dollar exemption. The authorization is available for us to be able to keep the exemption up to six thousand dollars. Uh, we have developed the, uh, tax levy program where we would, uh, not keep the exemption in place, but would provide for full pack, uh, full taxing of everything that isn't exempt. And the, only the first five hundred dollars is exempt. What that means is that if we had kept a six thousand dollar exemption, then we would've had to raise the residential rate up to fourteen dollars and sixty-five cents. The revaluation, uh, saw a reduction in the roll of eight hundred and fifty-seven million dollars over what the prior year had been. That's about a sixteen point five percent, uh, reduction in taxable value within the, uh, community. I've also estimated that based on the new tax roll, the value, average value of the single-family home will drop from four hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars down to three hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-six dollars. So essentially, that average, uh, single-family structure, uh, will generate about a hundred and eighty-one dollars in bills less than what the bill was in the current year. Conversely, because of the changes in the motor vehicle, uh, program, we will be seeing, uh, an increase of approximately a hundred and three dollars increase per vehicle if that vehicle on the current roll was valued in excess of fifty-five hundred dollars. So if, if a household had two vehicles that were valued over six thousand dollars in the current year, while they would be saving on that average house a hundred and eighty-one dollars, they would be paying out an additional two hundred and, uh, five dollars roughly in additional motor vehicle taxes. The, uh, property tax exemption program for the year is looking to increase by about eight thousand dollars over what the current year is. There'll be an exemption based on veterans, Gold Star, uh, XPOWs, exemptions of about eleven point two million dollars off of the overall tax roll with a, uh, net tax, uh, uh, abatement of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. I think one of the more important things, uh, on the roll is on page six of the memo that documents where the tax dollars are coming from. Uh, what we're going to see is about a three percent reduction in taxes that come from the residential base, or about one point seven million dollars will be raised less than had been raised in the current year. However, the commercials will see about a five, uh, five point three percent increase, or they'll be picking up four hundred thousand dollars more than what they were paying, uh, in terms of share in the, uh, the current year. The big change in the roll, obviously, is in the motor vehicle, where we will be seeing an increase of two point two million dollars, uh, more, uh, being generated out of the motor vehicle tax as a result of the change. We had a budget of two million one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in the enacted state budget for the current year, uh, for motor vehicle tax reimbursement with that six thousand dollar exemption. We received eighty-eight percent of that. But that two million one hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar revenue transfer from the state to the local government now is dropping to a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. That's why the, uh, the major change in terms of the motor vehicle tax as a percentage of the overall tax base, uh, is going up as much as it is. Uh, so that summary is there. We, once the certification is done, and I'm, uh, sure that the numbers, uh, are in balance, uh, I'll reissue a final copy of the memorandum. But because, uh, of the changes and particularly because we've taken the posture of, uh, using the five hundred dollar exemption, even though we had the latitude to use up to the six thousand, uh, I wanted to present that information in advance of the roll being certified. But again, if we had, uh, provided tax exemption, it goes contrary to what property tax, uh, uh, policy is about. And that is to tax based on the value of the asset owned by the resident. If the asset is worth ten thousand dollars and there's a five hundred dollar exemption being provided by the state, it should be taxed at the nine thousand five hundred dollar level. If you don't tax it at the nine thousand five hundred dollar level, what you're doing is then having to artificially increase the, uh, the tax rate on the other flexible, uh, components of the roll, namely the commercial base, which is already seeing an increase based on the revaluation, as well as the residential tax base. So that's the steps that we've taken and hopefully the certification will occur later this week. I'll answer any questions the council has. If there aren't any, I'll move on.
Any questions with Steve or Polly? Any questions towards the snow? Nope.
I did want to also just, uh, uh, qualify one thing. Transportation in the new education aid formula will deal exclusively with in-region transportation to charter and technical schools. It won't deal with the transportation costs associated with the general transportation within the district itself. What's forecast in that education aid formula at this point is that South Kingston would realize approximately, uh, I think it was a... A hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars if that program were in effect, uh, for the eleven twelve year. And that would be outside of the education aid formula. That would be a categorical aid, uh, that would be, uh, be provided. It really would be the first recognition that the transportation costs in the suburban areas... areas are, in fact, a cost factor that run at a higher level per student than what you would see in the urban areas. So it's an important first step to at least have that as a component of a categorical aid in the future. And hopefully, as Representative Caprio has indicated, there's going to be a lot of discussion that's going to be necessary after the report, which is also required by the education aid formula, is issued on November 15th of this year, on what the, what that forecast shows for revenue distribution in the 11-12 year. And he's absolutely correct that the formula that was adopted this year, a year in advance of implementation, certainly has, the legislature certainly has the prerogative to be able to make substantive changes if they feel, provide for more equitable distribution of the dollars. And we're certainly going to be, again, at the table to make sure that South Kingstown's concerns are expressed. David also made the comment that the value per motor vehicle increase was about $26. That's correct, but it is incorrect to assume that that's all of what people would see. The $26 is an average rather than a median. If we took the median, it would be up at the $103 increase per vehicle. The average is at 26 because we're actually putting, there's 30,499 vehicles on the roll that's registered right now for the tax roll. That has got only 1,800 cars that'll be exempt from taxation next year. In the current year, there was about 13,500 vehicles that were exempt. So that 13,500 cars are coming back onto the roll. Many of those were below $6,000 value, so they would have been below the average. So when we look at it, we can't look at what the average is on motor vehicles because the system has changed. What we have to do is to look at where the starting point was as far as value in current year to value in the following year. The rate is static. The rate is still set at the $18.71 per thousand dollars on motor vehicles, which goes back to the 1998 tax rate that we had in place at that time. So there's a number of changes, but there will be substantive changes. To be able to raise another $2.2 million out of motor vehicles means that the, that there will be people that will see substantive changes in what the cost per vehicle is that they will be paying in the 2010-2011 year. Last item I want to mention is that we will be again holding the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day in South Kingstown. That is in conjunction with Rhode Island Resource Recovery. That is scheduled for June 26th here at the Town Hall between nine and one. Folks that have questions can go right to Resource Recovery. The information's on the town's website. They can also schedule appointments to be able to bring in the hazardous materials. This has been a very successful program in the past. We expect it to be another busy day on the 26th. But this is a really important program that Resource Recovery offers. It's a way for people to get rid of hazardous materials in a proper way, and for that stuff not to end up down drains or to be put or buried in the backyard. Many of these substances are very dangerous materials that, if not properly handled, can create public health and safety issues. So we, again, are pleased to be able to work with Rhode Island Resource Recovery to be able to have this day, and hopefully, many of our residents will take advantage of it. With that, that would conclude my report, unless the council has any questions on any of the three reports that I've issued over the prior three weeks.
Anybody have any questions for Steve? No? Okay. Town Solicitor's report.
Unless there are questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mike? No? No, then we move on to appointments, and we've talked about this earlier, so Polly?
We did, and our first job is to, I'd like to nominate John Kimpton for Partnership for Prevention, and his term would end in June 2012. We interviewed him several weeks ago.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Then we have a number of reappointments. The first one is for the building code, minimum housing code, for Michael Joyce. And it's a five-year term. His term will be over in June 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And we have two for the Prevention Partnerships for Prevention, and both of their terms will be over in three years. And these are Celeste Corcoran. Her term will expire in June 2013. And Pastor Keith McNamara. His term will also expire in June 2013.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Kath?
Yes?
Can I just add the piece of information that Eileen Stone will be putting together a list, because when they separate it from the coalition to the commission, some of them don't need town council appointment. So she's going to forward some information to the town council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ella. And the Recreation Commission, one member to be reappointed, Janice Prochaska, and her term will expire June 2013.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And for the Trustees of South Kingstown's School Fund, we have two reappointments, Carmine Peolino and Milt Reed, and both of their terms will expire in June 2015.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And for the Waterfront Advisory Commission, we have one reappointment, Ron Smith, and his term will expire in June 2013.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
That's it. Yeah, we had a lot of reappointments. Good people.
And we did talk at the beginning, we have a new applicant for economic development or the historic district, and Sue was going to contact that candidate for a future appointment. Next, we have new business items. New business item A is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Baker &amp; Taylor Incorporated, 2550 West Tavola Road, Charlotte, North Carolina, for the purchase of books for the South Kingstown Public Library from July 1st, 2010 through June 30th, 2011, in the amount not to exceed $66,000, and is further describing the memorandum from the library director to the town manager dated June 2nd, bid recommendation, book, South Kingstown Public Library. Steve, do you want to talk about this?
The recommendation is to stay with the existing contractor of record, Baker &amp; Taylor. There were four bids that were received. Boarda Company submitted a bid which would be 10 basis points below that of Baker &amp; Taylor. However, Baker &amp; Taylor's book selection, as well as the library system's use of their ordering system and cataloging of the system, they feel that it would be worth the dollars to be able to keep it with the existing vendor of record. I support that recommendation and ask the council to approve as presented.
Motion to.
Then I move approval of new business resolution A.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have new business item B, a resolution authorizing an award of bid, East Winds Dry Cleaners Incorporated, 4619 Post Road, East Greenwich, for dry cleaning and laundering services at the unit price bid for the July 1st, 2010 through June 30th, 2011, as further describing the memorandum from the police chief to the town dated June 2nd, entitled Bid Recommendation Dry Cleaning.
As noted in the bid recommendation, East Winds is the lowest qualified bidder. We did receive, and they have also served as the town's cleaning service since 2007. Recommend the ward as presented. Cleaning services here are both for EMS and police. There's about $22,000 worth of expense that will be incurred over the course of the year, or potentially would be incurred. Since we pay on an actual garment basis, it depends on how many of the items are turned in for the cleaning service.
Okay. Any questions for Steve? No? Do I have a motion?
Motion. Approval of new business item B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to the Rhode Island Interlocal Risk Trust, Management Trust, 501 Wampanoag Trail, East Providence, for a two-year term life and accidental death and dismemberment contract for a period of July 1st through 2010 through June 30th, 2012, and following rates for all municipal employees, a 0.169 thousand per month, person, month, per month. All retirees on a contributory basis of 1.722,000 person per month, and is further describing the memorandum from the financial controller to the town manager dated and entitled Term Life Insurance Contract Award Recommendation. Steve?
You've received a recommendation from Frank Xavier, the financial controller for the town. Neither the finance director nor I dissipated in the review of the bids. I serve as the chairman of the Rhode Island Interlocal and Allen's, the chairman of the finance committee. The, there were two bids that were received, one from the trust and one from New York Life. New York Life did not meet the bidding specs, which required submittal of prices for accidental death and dismemberment insurance. That was included in the trust bid. Trust has been the supplier of record over the past few years, so I would ask, with my disclosure, as well as the finance director's disclosure, I'd ask the council to consider the recommendation as presented by the financial controller.
Okay. Any questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve new business item C.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to new business item H, a resolution authorizing the town manager enter into and execute a one-year sludge disposal contract with the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation, 65 Shunpike Johnston, for the disposal of the municipal wastewater sludge for the period July 1st, 2010 through July 30th, 2011, and is further describing the memorandum from the public services director to the town manager dated June 8th, 2010, entitled Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation Sludge Disposal Contract, 10-11 years.
There's no changes in the contract that we signed for the current year. The price will remain at $65. Under the cap that they place on the contract, we can bring in as many as 1,822 tons. So the contract has a value of around $97,000 if we were to execute to the full level of the cap.
Does a motion?
Motion to approve new business item H.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? No? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Never many questions on that sludge one, huh? Nobody wants to think about that. Haven't taken a tour of that facility in a while, the sludge-making facility.
Wait till the summer.
Wait till the hot weather's on, and put Steve in a nice new suit. Yeah.
So we'll all want a nice cold drink of water.
Inside jokes, I guess. A resolution authorizing an award to bid for defer student, 529 Switch Road, Wood Junction, Wood River Junction, Rhode Island, for the 10-11 bus transportation service in accordance with all bidding specifications and an amount not to exceed $32,625, and is further describing the memorandum from the director of leisure services to the town manager dated June 4th, 2010, entitled Bid Recommendation Bus Transportation. Steve?
The recommendation is the award for a student, and it would be at the prices that have been quoted for services with the South Kingstown school system, which would be at the $67.50 per hour, per vehicle. Most of this is through the recreation programs for the discovery camp, some of the specialty camps, as well as the skateboard camp. The rental fees are in really several budgets, both the guild and the town accounts. We would suspect that we would spend approximately $27,000 roughly if all of the programs were maxed out in terms of participation, and that would be the maximum under the contract.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I move approval of new business item I.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Kathy, if I could just correct, that's, the maximum would be 32,625. I was looking at the, what the projected value would be, but the actual budgeted amounts were up to 32,625.
I thought you were factoring in rain dates that you wouldn't use all of that, but just to be on the safe side. Okay. J is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Safety Marking Incorporated, 460 Bastwick Avenue, Bridgeport, Connecticut, for municipal road striping services using waterborne paint and epoxy at a unit price bid and in an amount not to exceed $20,000 for the 2010-2011, and $20,000 for the 2011-2012, subject to funding availability, and is further describing the memorandum from the public service director to the town manager dated June 4th, bid recommendation, regional road striping program.
If you've noticed that the roads are being striped in advance, it's not under this contract that's being let. The, this contract provides for striping both in the fall and in the spring. What's being done now is the tail end of the last contract for that. So it's not a case where the work was done in advance of council authorization. We'll be doing about 45 miles of road, of road striping twice a year. There's about four miles of that that'll be done with an epoxy paint. That's where the wear surface just can't hold the water-based paint. And the rest of it will be the water-based painting that will be done on about 43 miles of, 41 miles of road. We're expecting to spend $20,000 each fiscal year, both 11-12 and 12-13, 10-11 and 11-12, under this contract. This is another one of the regional contracts that South Kingstown puts out. We put out for the striping for most of the other municipalities in the South County area, so that we bring a company in once, the mobilization costs are minimized, to be able to reduce the cost to each of the municipalities. Our share of it would be around $40,000 over the two years. Overall, the contract would be probably as much as, somewhere in the area of over $100,000 if the other communities are to accept the proposals as presented.
Any questions for that? No? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve new business item J.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is K, a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Fall River Electrical Associates Company, 74 Cornow Street, Fall River, Mass., to furnish and install a 500-kilowatt diesel generator and transfer switch as specified, in an amount not to exceed $248,549, including contingency, and is further describing the memorandum from the public service director to the town manager dated May 14th, 2010, and entitled Bid Recommendation Silver Lake Pump Station Diesel Generator.
The pump station serves both the town of South Kingstown and the University of Rhode Island. The cost sharing on this, what we're looking at is about $175,000 in South Kingstown direct reimbursement, and about $91,000 in university reimbursement, as far as the overall cost share. So of that total amount, we will see about $175 come out of South Kingstown and the remainder out of the university. We're also using about a $20,000 contingency for the installation. Once we start to remove the existing generator and the replacement with that, as well as the power switch itself, there may be some additional electrical costs that are going to be incurred. I'd recommend council approve as presented to K Electric, I'm sorry, to Fall River Electric.
Any questions for Steve? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
I move approval of new business item K.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I shall move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is unanimous, and we are adjourned at 9:02.